Good morning to our participants and welcome to the eleventh and last session of the Environmental Law Teachers Online Training Program. This training program is developed by the Legal Education Board in partnership with the Asian Development Act, the International Union for Conservation of Nature and Academy of Environmental Law and the UN Environment Program. I am Attorney Maria Romina Gummal, Program Coordinator of the Legal Education Board, and I will be your host for today. The topic for today's session is Environmental Law in a Chance. Now, to begin our sessions, I'd like to go over first to our house rules. So please let us know if we could record this session today. We will only start recording if all parties consent to the recording. Mut your microphone while waiting for others to join in and when not speaking during the session. Kindly use our chat box option if you have any questions or comment and react using the reaction button. We'll also be taking a group picture, so we would request everyone to turn on their video camera and turn it off again to lessen the baggage for everyone in the meeting. The links to the registration form as well as the evaluation form will be sent in our chat box. So kindly check our chat box and fill out the registration form to confirm your attendance. Alright, to begin our session, let's have first a quick icebreaker to check if our participants recall our last session on December 1. So I'll give the virtual floor to Mr. Gab Matala, one of our colleague, facilitate a little game for us. Gab?
Yes, thank you Attorney Mary. Can you see my screen now? Yes.
Gab?
To our participants, please go to the link that I will share on the chat. And I think General has shared it. So please input your surnames and optionally you can also input your... And then we'll have again our prizes later after. So maybe we can start... We have... We currently have 42 participants in the rooms. I suggest everyone to... Find the first icebreaker.
Alright, to our participants who just entered the room, kindly click the link in our chat box and join us for a little game to start our morning.
And I'm seeing Lisa, JC, Mary, K, Ronnie, and Anzo. And we have seventeen participants. Maybe let's start at twenty participants. Let's have three more join up. Okay, there are no more. Maybe we can start now? So this will be a refresher quiz from our previous sessions. First, what is the law student practice rule? This was discussed in our last meeting of session 11. Nice, we got eight participants. We got it right. Next. We have JC leading our scoreboard. And then the second question, which among of the following is least regulated at the Canadian Act? From session seven. Reminds mobile sources, dictionary sources, or people's additives to cocktails? Yeah, we got nine. Attorney Galahad, Professor Galahad would be proud of. You guys. Next. From session three, knowledge is a commodity to be transferred from teacher to student. Accept behaviorism, cognitive behaviorism, and the same or collective behaviorism. We only have one correct answer. It's behaviorism. Next. Under the GAT WTO, seals are protected because they are national treasures of artistic, historic, or ideological value. Or natural resources are danger for artistic needs to protect public work. We got two correct answers. Oh yes, Gala is still at the first place. And our last question is, the 2018 IPCC warns of limiting global warming to block to avoid the worst impacts of climate change? The answer is five minutes, seventy-seven or is it 1.77? Is it 1.577 or 2.37? That's right, we have eleven correct answers. Our top, we have BC. Top two. And top one, we have... Thank you very much for participating. Sorry, icebreaker.
Alright, thank you very much Gab for that very engaging game. And to our participants, JC, you won our quiz today and to the two others who are runner-ups, please expect an email from our staff or to claim your prize and congratulations. So let us now proceed to start our session today. Let's begin it with the hearing of good stories from a video presentation created by our wonderful resource speaker, a helper of the Legal Education Board and environmental advocate, attorney, Antonio Opasa.
Can you hear the sound?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Alright, I hope everyone is inspired by the good stories shared to us by Attorney Opasa. I think sharing good stories of people making change to the environment is a wonderful approach to help solve the earth's crisis. Through inspiration, we can cultivate the seed of change. Now let us begin our session with the introduction of our first resource speaker for today. Our first resource speaker is the managing partner of Jimeno, Coppe, and David Law Offices. She is a professional lecturer, a Philippine Judicial Academy of Supreme Court of the Philippines, a professor, and associate dean in Central Escolar University of Law, University School of Law and Jurisprudence. She is also an MCLE lecturer and an arbitrator in the International Chamber of Commerce, International Court of Arbitration, and the Ad hoc Arbitration in the Philippines. Our resource speaker is also the author of several legal papers published in various law journals. Among others are The Philippine Justice and Penal System, The Daunting Road to Restorative Justice: The Lawyer's Review, and also the Provisional Remedies Bench Book for the Trial Courts. She is a graduate of the San Beda University Graduate School of Law, Masters of Law, and she obtained her Bachelor's of Law in the University of the Philippines in the year 1985. The next year, she was also admitted in the Philippine bar. She earned her MBA in the Professional School in Dalasal University, a recipient of the first Claro Distinguished Alumni Award conferred by the UP College of Mass Communication on November 10, 2017, and the 2016 Outstanding Alumni for Public Service conferred by the UP Alumni Association on June 25, 2016 in UP de Leman. Ladies and gentlemen, let us all welcome our first resource speaker for today, Attorney Rita Linda Ventura Jimeno.
Thank you very much Attorney Romina Gummal. It is my pleasure to be here with you today. And I really would like to congratulate the Legal Education Board for this training, this series of trainings that they're doing for faculty members or teachers of environmental law. So I would like to go straight to my lecture because we have very limited time. And just like Attorney Tony Opasa, who is an environmental guru, I have many stories to share, which I think will inspire not only teachers of environmental law, but people, ordinary people, that they have the power to make local government units comply with environmental laws. So please allow me to share my screen. Okay, let me share my screen now. Alright, can you see my screen?
Yes, Attorney.
Okay, I would like to begin, kasi we don't have too much time. I would like first to share the story of what we did in the Philippine Bar Association when I was president in 2004 to 2005. So sharing the Philippine Bar Association story. I was then the president and Attorney Tony Opasa was my co-chairman in the Environmental Law Committee of the PBA. So we decided to challenge the local government units of Metro Manila to find out if they're complying with the Ecological Solid Waste Management Law, or RA 9003. So what Attorney Tony Opasa and I did was we communicated with the national here. This is the first step that we took. We wrote letters and held meetings with the National Solid Waste Management Commission of the Department of Environment and Natural Resources to ask which LGUs were not complying with the Solid Waste Management Law. And the standards, of course, that they used in determining which LGUs were complying or not were whether or not garbage or waste were segregated at source, whether or not collection of garbage were also segregated, whether or not there were materials recovery facilities put up as required by law. So these were the basic standards used by the Commission of the DNR to determine which local government units were complying or violating the Solid Waste Management Law. And what happened was after that series of meeting and after inspections done by the DNR itself, they wrote us a letter and gave us a list of who were to be given notices to sue first and who were to be given a chance to improve their solid waste management collection. So out of the thirteen cities and municipalities at that time back in 2005, they submitted to us a list showing that there are eleven local government units in Metro Manila which had to be first given notices to sue, meaning those in the first priority. So we sent notices to sue to eleven cities and municipalities, giving them thirty days to comply with the law. And you know, out of the eleven LGUs, seven started to comply. In fact, we were very happy that because the DNR again did a series of inspections to see if they're already having a segregated collection of waste and if they already had MRFs. So later on, DNR, the National Solid Waste Management Commission in particular, came back to us and told us that out of the eleven to whom we sent notices to sue, only four did nothing at all to improve the compliance with the Solid Waste Management Law. So we filed complaints against Pasay, the mayors of Pasay, Caloocan, Malabon, and Paranyake. And then we did this, we filed this with the Office of the Ombudsman, which has an environmental ombudsman. So you see, lawyers have the power to do something and to make local governments comply. So when the case, while the case was ongoing at the Office of the Ombudsman, these mayors started to comply. Kaya nag-improve naman. Of course, I can't say the 100% to improvement, pero we saw that there was a big improvement in the collection of waste and also in the segregated waste at source, meaning all the barangays had to be met by the mayors themselves to tell them that they had to segregate at source and tell the communities that they have to segregate at source. Because you see, source of corruption talaga yan eh. Because we discovered that if the garbage trucks, you know, make trips, so many trips, let's say ten trips a day, example lang, it will be to the benefit of the mayors and the, you know, the officials because there's a kickback for every trip, hindi ba? If they reduce the waste because it's segregated at source and hindi na tinatapon 'yung mga biodegradable waste, mababawasan, hindi ba? Mababawasan 'yung trips ng trucks and therefore mababawasan din ang kanilang so-called kita. So that was the reason why in the beginning it was so difficult to make them comply. But eventually, they all started to comply. So that is the first story. And I credit this to my friend Tony Opasa for helping me out when I was still the president of the Philippine Bar Association. Actually, we also filed complaints against the mayor of Ros Banios Laguna at that time because garbage was being dumped at the side of the Makiling, Mount Makiling. And it was discovered and pictures were taken, so we gave him a notice to sue as well. And he removed the dump site beside the Makiling, Mount Makiling. Okay, so let me now go to the, this one, this story is a little more, it's a little more exciting and maybe more colorful. Kasi talagang marami kaming pinagdaanan na mahirap dito sa Lobo-Batangas experience. Where is Lobo? Many people do not know where Lobo is. In fact, I am not from Lobo. My husband is not from Lobo. We only discovered Lobo. And the first time that we saw it, we fell in love with it. Kasi it's so beautiful. There are mountains, several mountains surrounding, you know. On the left side, when you go to Lobo, you will find mountain ranges. In fact, it's like going to Baguio, kasi may mga zigzag going through the mountains. But on your right side, you will see the sea. So ang ganda talaga, mountains and sea put together. So it's a beautiful place. So we fell in love with it and bought a place there ourselves. So this town is very important, or this municipality is very important because its coast or its shores is a part of the Verde Island Passage, which all of you know is the center of the center of the world's marine biodiversity. And in fact, now if you go there and if you swim or dive, you will be swimming with sea turtles na malalaki talaga and big fish and dolphins. Dolphins actually play around that area. So kami, we have the pleasure of seeing them every so often. You see turtles naman, you see them many times, kasi nandyan lang sila sa harapan ng coast, ng beach, if you have a property by the beach. So given that scenario, so kami, we own the place there. We actually, this is a little advertisement. We have a resort called Punta Verde Resort in Lobo-Batangas. So it's very precious to us because it's so beautiful, the place is so beautiful, and we were lucky to have a place there, to be able to obtain a place there. So this is the story. It all started in May 2015 when we, you know, the community, I was in my office at that time. Somebody called me up that a public hearing is being done by the DNR for the purpose of issuing ECCs or Environmental Clearance Certificates to two mining companies, Egerton Gold and MRL Gold Mining Corporations. These two corporations, by the way, and to let you know, are both from Australia. They have mother companies in Australia. Australia is such a big country. It's so huge that even if you put the St. Paul Cathedral in the middle of Australia, nobody will even notice it. It's so big. But why are these Australian companies mining in the Philippines? Because in the Philippines, you know, you just line the pockets of some public officials, you get the MPSAs or the mineral production sharing agreements. Sa matalag in their country, it is so difficult at all, very difficult, to be able to obtain a license to mine because they value their environment. So I received a call that a hearing was being held. Sabi ko, ano 'yung hearing? What is that all about? Sabi nung kaibigan namin na nandun, kasi mostly nasa Manila naman talaga kami. Sabi niya, nagpa-public hearing kasi magmamining daw ng gold dito. So we were surprised. So we had to go there immediately and find out. And then we were able to get a piece of paper showing that, unknown to us all the citizens of Lobo, kasi naging citizen na kami diyan back in 2006 pa. Unknown to us, they were able, these two Australian companies were able to get MPSAs and they were able to get the endorsement of the Sangguniang Bayan of Lobo, meaning the municipal council of Lobo endorsing their gold mining project. So we were agus. Sabi namin, what? They're going to chop off all the mountains of Lobo because it's going to be an open mining? It's not only going to destroy the land, it's also going to destroy the sea because of the chemicals they will be using, cyanide, mercury, and all that stuff. Siyempre mamamatay ang lupa. You cannot plant anything agricultural yan. And the sea, which is the center of the world's marine biodiversity, will also suffer. And you know, because of that, we all decided to go to Gina Lopez. So si Gina Lopez was there with us all the time and we decided to plan out our courses of action. First, nagtayo kami ng coalition composed of, so this is our five-pronged approach. The first one, with the help of Gina, we organized the citizenry. We called all the members of the community who were business owners, who had resorts, members of the church, business sector, and other affected sectors into a coalition. So we formed a coalition, which is called, now it still exists, the Coalition for the Preservation of the Verde Island Passage. Sabi nuo po namin yan, with the help of Gina Lopez and we held mass actions para ipaliwanag sa kanila why Lobo should not be a place for mining, even if there are gold and there are silver and there are other minerals there. It should not be a place for mining simply because it fronts the Verde Island Passage, which is the center of the center of the world's marine biodiversity. It should be, in fact, an ecotourism zone. So yun 'yung first course of action na ginawa namin. We organized the citizenry. And then we held mass actions. Talagang halos every day, hindi na yata ako nagtatrabaho mula nung May 2015 until the time that we were able to successfully stop the mining from happening. We held mass actions, so the church, atsaka 'yung bishop doon, atsaka 'yung mga paris priests of Batangas, helped us, joined us in all our meetings and the... helped us, joined us in all our meetings and the mass actions. So nagrarally kami palagi sa harapan ng municipal hall, where the Sangguniang Bayan, uh, would hold its, uh, meetings. So Gina Lopez and her team from ABS-CBN joined all the mass actions. So it was so good, because we, we landed our fight against mining, landed not only in, in the papers, because I was then a columnist for a newspaper, and then I had friends in the media who helped us out also to write about it. But ABS-CBN, television and radio would air whatever our concerns were and our fears were. And Gina Lopez negotiated with the mayor and the municipal council members, and she offered to help to promote Lobo as a tourism site and to conduct trainings in organic farming. Sabi ni, ni Gina, what are they looking for? They're looking for gold, but you have a diamond here. Look at the sea. It's diamond. Don't you, don't you see it? That's your gem. Sabi niya ganyan. You should not lose it. And where are these people going to bring the money that they will earn by getting gold from Lobo? They will bring them to their home, meaning to Australia, while we, we will be left with poisoned water, poisoned soil. So ano pang mangyayari sa citizens ng Lobo? So we were explaining this, and we were joining all the Sangguniang Bayan, Bayan meetings protesting all the times, all the time. So yun 'yung second course of action, which we did. The third course of action, which we did, was, uh, I formed a legal team. And mostly, those that, uh, helped me were members of my law firm. May mga ibang volunteers, but basically, it was my law firm that did all the paperwork. So nga, this is something I'd like to share with you, that you should tell your students that lawyers have the power, have a very big power in making environmental laws enforced. So talagang very important ang role ng lawyers sa enforcement of environmental laws. So we filed petitions, filed the petition with the Sangguniang Bayan to revoke the endorsement that they gave to the two mining companies in favor, uh, favoring gold mining projects in Lobo, so that they will be given an environmental clearance certificate. So we also filed a petition with the Office of the President. So we filed a petition with the Office of the President to stop mining in Lobo, and we filed also with the DNR and the Department of Tourism, because the Department of Tourism had a role. It, it had the power to declare Lobo as a tourism site. So we filed all these petitions. Ang dami naming paperwork na ginawa talaga. So we filed all these petitions. What happened was, uh, the president of the Philippines endorsed our letter to the Department of Tourism, and because of that, ang Department of Tourism immediately acted. So the Department of Tourism, uh, submitted for agenda our petition in an inter-agency task force that would evaluate whether we should be declared as an ecotourism zone or not. And, uh, that I'm going to explain further later on. But let me first go to the last action that we took. We use also People's Initiative, kasi sabay-sabay naming ginagawa ito, itong five-pronged approaches namin na'to. While we were doing the petitions, we were also doing mass actions. And because we were joined by environmental activists, we also thought of putting up, uh, making rather, uh, signature gathering campaign. So nag-signature gathering kami to be able to file a People's Initiative, uh, petition to, uh, make, to make an ordinance, uh, saying that Lobo is a, uh, that Lobo cannot be a site for ma- for mining, so to ban mining in Lobo. Our basis was Republic Act six seven thirty-five, which allows us citizens to use People's Initiative, initiative, hindi lang actually environmental laws, hindi lang actually changes in a, in a, in the constitution. The People's Initiative can be used to craft laws as long as you gather at least ten percent of the signatures of the total number of the registered voters in the municip- municipality. So we did that. Talagang nag-naggather kami ng signatures, and we were supposed, we were already ready to submit this to comlec para mag-call ng plebiscite. Kasi pag mag-call ng plebiscite, our proposed refer, uh, our proposed, uh, ordinance banning mining in Lobo would have been passed, kasi nga, nakuhin na namin ang majority of the people of Lobo. But mind you, it was not an easy fight, because there were landowners in Lobo who really did not care about Lobo, because mayaman naman sila eh, they had properties, properties in Metro Manila elsewhere, and they just have properties which they inherited located in Lobo. So what happened was, marami rin ang pro-mining, at marami, and you know, these companies were prepared to spend money. So they were lining the pockets of the members of the Sanggunian. So it was not an easy task for us. It was not an easy fight. Napakahirap talaga. And remember, this was in twenty fifteen, and elections was to be held in twenty sixteen. Because of that, they needed money, diba? Kaya naman, the members of the Sanggunian were in a dilemma, whether to, uh, whether to revoke the, the endorsement that they made or not, because these, uh, companies, what we heard was, they were, you know, giving lagay and bribe money to these, uh, councilmen who wanted to run again. So we, it was a difficult fight, but then we were prepared to do all the actions, pati nga 'yung People's Initiative. Nakagather na kami ng at least ten percent of the total number of registered voters. But what happened? So this is the happy outcome. The Sangguniang Bayan revoked its April twenty twenty fifteen endorsement of the gold mining projects in Lobo. Napilitan sila, because Gina Lopez was so noisy. And you know Gina, she's so passionate about environment. We did not really know her. I did, she wasn't my friend from before. Naging kaibigan ko na lang siya, because it happened that one of the resort owners in Lobo also was a producer in ABS-CBN. So when we gathered all the resort owners to explain to them that the, there was this secret plot, secret, because we did not know that the Sangguniang Bayan already endorsed the gold mining project, and that we did not know that there were already MPSAs issued to these, uh, two gold mining companies. So tawag namin diyan secret. It was behind our backs. And then, uh, because of Gina and, uh, because of the media help that we got, napili time 'yung Sangguniang Bayan to revoke their April twenty twenty fifteen endorsement of the gold mining project. And the Office of the President, we learned it later on, endorsed our petition, uh, our coalition's petition to the DO, to the Department of Tourism. And as I mentioned kanina, the Department of Tourism agendaed the petition in the meeting of the Regional Ecotourism Committee composed of representatives of the Department of Tourism, DNR, UP Los Banios, DILG, BNP, DPWH, and NEDA. And they had, and they had several meetings pala. We only came to know about it much later, when they informed us of the outcome. And because of the noise that we were creating, we were all against mining, uh, they approved it and they declared, uh, declared Lobo as an ecotourism zone. So, but this one, it was declared pala on June twenty-sixth, twenty fifteen, but we only came to know about it on August five, twenty fifteen, when we received the letter, the official communication from the Department of Tourism telling us that on June twenty-sixth, twenty fifteen, Lobo was declared as an ecotourism zone and declared as a protected area as well, being one of the priority areas for tourism development. Uh, so, our letter was received by us, the letter by DOT was received by us on August five, twenty sixteen, and so we were all celebrating. And to top it off, ABS-CBN, as promised by Gina, she made good her promise. So ABS-CBN's Lingkod Kapamilya Foundation entered into a MOA with the Lobo LGU, together with the mayor, they signed a MOA, where ABS-CBN Foundation, um, committed to provide marketing and media support as well as technical support for livelihood, tourism, and environmental development. So nagkaroon kami doon ng mga projects for organic farming, tuwang-tuwa 'yung community, because the far- the farmers learned, uh, new skills of organic farming, at may mga livelihood projects pang iba na dinevelop ang ABS-CBN Foundation. And Gina Lopez, also, uh, she had a show, uh, where she, which she hosted herself. Palagi niyang fini-feature ang Lobo. So nakilala ang Lobo, and, uh, I don't know if you know Lobo, but, uh, for many, nakilala na ang Lobo because of our fight against mining. Another good outcome was this. On January eighteen, twenty sixteen, the Sangguniang Bayan of Lobo denied with finality the motion for reconsideration of the, of the two mining companies, Egerton and MRL, to reinstate its revoked endorsement of gold mining, of the gold mining project. Kasi, diba, ni-revoke initially ng Sanggunian 'yung endorsement nila, because we were pressuring them. However, came January of twenty sixteen, dahil malapit ng election, the members of the Sanggunian were wavering, kasi nga ayaw nila sana na they were, they were getting, uh, another set of bribe money. So ayaw sana nilang i- i- deny with finality 'yung endorsement. They were hoping we would become silent and we would, we would forget about it, at papabayaan na lang namin, so they again can change their minds. So pero hindi namin sila binitawan. Talagang, we were, uh, really, uh, insisting that they should fi- revoke with finality. So nag-file pa ng motion for reconsideration 'yung MRL. We opposed it. Ang sabi naming ganyan, they have no personality at all, because they're not even citizens of Lobo, of Lobo Batangas. So sabi namin, uh, also, the, the consent and the desire of the people should be taken into consideration. So if the people, if the general citizenry of that municipality did not like mining, then they should listen, they should not allow mining to happen. You know, there's one thing pa, before I end, no, before I go to my last happy outcome. Uh, I'd like you to know also, that kaya naman pala, nakuha ng, ng, uh, Sangguniang Bayan, 'yung consent ng mga barangays for the endorsement of mining project, of the mining project in Lobo, was this. They, uh, took all the barangay captains to a trip. Nag, nag-trip sila, parang, parang ibina, ibinakasyon nila sa isang probinsya ang mga barangay chairman. And there, nakuha nila 'yung sina- signed consents ng mga barangay, saying that they were all for mining. What happened was, when we discovered this, because may mga barangay captains din naman kaming kaibigan, so unti-unti kinausap namin isa-isa, and they were, we were able to make them sign an affidavit of retraction. And they explained that they did not know what they were signing. They were brought to obfuscation, and, uh, they were made to sign. Nung nalaman nila na tungkol pala sa mining yon, at nalaman nila na masama palang effect ng mining sa community, then they all made affidavits of retraction. So yun 'yung nakatulong din na isa pa sa amin, because we submitted that to the barang, to the Sangguniang Bayan. And finally, the Sanggunian, after thereafter, passed a zoning ordinance classifying Lobo primarily as an agrotourism zone and banning mining permanently. So because of that, nakuha namin, we were able to be happy and be assured na talagang hindi na marerevive ang mining sa, sa Lobo. And then Gina Lopez was appointed as Secretary of, uh, Touri, of, uh, Environment at that time. And, uh, again, as Secretary of Environment, she was able to, uh, make the, the declaration of Lobo as an ecotourism or agro-ecotourism zone, uh, more permanent. But of course, kami, we are still always vigilant, kasi you never know, pag nagkaroon na naman ang change of administration, what will happen next? So, there. And I would like to thank you for listening to this, to this small storytelling. So I'd like to end my sharing now, but you can ask questions if we still have time. So there, that's my story, and, uh, I tell you, it was not an easy one. We really had a tough time fighting mining in Lobo.
Thank you so much Attorney Himena for sharing your good stories with our participants and for protecting the, um, the, the Lobo, uh, the, the place in Lobo Batangas against mining operations. So we will have a question and answer later, after the, uh, the lectures, lecture, our resource speaker finish her lecture. So that will be around ten, or at ten thirty. So we will, um, ask our participants if you have any questions for the lecture or sharing of Attorney Himena. Kindly share it in our chat box, and we will, um, raise it later during our Q and A. So moving forward, um, let us continue our discussion with our second resource speaker for today. Our second resource speaker is a columnist in the weekly column Legally Speaking Business Mirror. She is a broadcaster in the weekly tele rato Laban Paris Harapatan, is DWIZ eight-eight-two AM, a lecturer in the mandatory continuing legal education, MCLE, from two thousand seven until present. She's also the bar examiner in commercial law in nineteen eighty-eight bar, a board member in the integrated bar of the Philippines Electoral Board from nineteen eighty-eight to nineteen ninety, and the president, chairman, and a board advisor at present of the Intellectual Property Association of the Philippines High Place. A member of the Philippine Bar Association and a founder, senior partner in Capunan and Castillo Law Offices. She is a graduate of the University of the Philippines College of Law Class seventy-eight and AB Political Science of Class seventy-three. She passed the bar in seventh in nineteen seventy-nine, and she also obtained summer courses for international humanitarian law in Magdalene College, Cambridge University. She also obtained a special course in the National Institute of Humanitar- Humanitarian Law in San Remo, Italy. Ladies and gentlemen, let us all welcome our second resource speaker for today, Attorney Lorna Patahol, Patahol Capunan. Attorney?
Thank you very much, uh, to all the organizers of this forum, and I'm happy to see that, uh, your speakers here, all my friends, uh, my your immediately preceding speaker Attorney Himena really is a fighter and advocate for environmental, uh, uh, compliance. And of course, uh, Tony Oposa is the environment warrior. So, thank you, and, um, I think I sent you my slides, my PowerPoint presentation.
As attorney.
Yes, uh, can we do it in the order of, in this order? We'll start with a short review of the writ of calikasan, so that our listeners will understand the context of the West Tower Condominium Corporation case versus FPIC. Then we proceed to the case itself and, uh, end with the reactions of the residents and owners who have been victims of this environmental disaster of such magnitude that the Supreme Court granted a writ of calikasan. So, magandang, magandang umaga po sa inyong lahat. I can see that we have more than fifty. You have sixty-four participants here, I hope. This will not be a boring morning for all of you. Um, can we now start with a review of the writ of calikasan? Can we put the slides, please?
As attorney, I'm coordinating with our tech team, Gladys.
Mary, maybe you can share the slides. I think, if you have your copy of the slides.
Alright, thank you Angela for that.
Okay, uh, again, magandang, magandang umaga po sa inyong lahat. This is just a short review of the writ of calikasan. I'm Lorna Patahol Capunan of the Cap- Capunan and Castillo Law Offices. Next slide, please. So what is the writ of calikasan? You know, since twenty-ten, Filipinos have had a distinct legal weapon. Anong legal weapon yan? This is the writ of calikasan. And this is based on the constitutional mandate for the state to protect and advance the right of the people to a balanced and helpful ecology in accordance with the rhythm and harmony of nature. Um, section sixteen of Article Two of the Philippine Constitution. Next slide, please. So, uh, those of you who are students of law with you, would So, uh, those of you who are students of law would, you would know that there are many other protective writs. We have the writ of Amparo and the writ of Abys Corpus. But the writ of calikasan comes from a Filipino word, as you know, meaning nature. And in contrast to these other protective writs, the writ of calikasan protects one's rights for a healthy environment rather than your constitutional rights. Next slide, please. Who was responsible for the writ of calikasan? Their friend Chief Justice Reynato Puno in twenty-ten took the initiative and issued the rules, rules of procedures for environmental cases. Because as we all know, the constitution, constitutional provisions are not self-executing provisions and they require either legislation or regulation to put them into effect. So we have to thank Chief Justice Puno for the writ of calikasan. Next, please. Uh, just by way of review, the writ, the request for a writ of calikasan can be filed by a natural or judicial person authorized or a authorized people's organization, non-government organization, or any public interest groups that are accredited by or registered with any government agency. And on whose behalf constitutional rights to a balanced and helpful economy is violated or threatened to be violated by an unlawful act or omission of a public official or employee or a private individual or entity. So you can be a person, you can be a judicial person, entity, you can be an NGO, people's organization. The damage does not have to occur to you personally, uh, to acquire, uh, legal personality to file a suit, provided it is filed on behalf of persons whose constitutional rights to a balanced and helpful ecology is threatened. Next slide, please. So under section one of the rules and regulations, this must involve an environmental damage of such magnitude, and this is very important, magnitude as to affect inhabitants that come from two or more municipalities or provinces. So this is, and this is very important as we will go into the West Tower Condominium case. Because as you can see, we filed directly with the Supreme Court because of the magnitude. It involved a pipeline covering more than thirteen municipalities and cities. Next, please. We went directly to the Supreme Court because this involved a very, uh, very grave constitutional issue affecting more than eighty families and the whole barangay bankal in Makati, plus all of the municipalities and provinces where the one hundred seventeen kilometer pipeline of West Tower of First Philippine, uh, corporation ran. So dumiretso po kami sa Supreme Court, but you can also file with any stations of the Court of Appeals. And as again, don't forget, the magnitude must be so, such that it affects inhabitants in more than one municipality or city. If it is only a, uh, town or a city, uh, then you should go not to the Supreme Court or the Court of Appeals, but to a regional trial court or a designated environmental court by the Supreme Court. Next slide, please. Uh, let's not go into this. Of course, there, these are the contents of the petition, as in all cases. It must be important that you name what specific right is violated. Next slide, please. And this is very important because, you know, kaming mga lawyers pwedeng magdelatory tactics, no? As in the story of, uh, Attorney Rita Jimeno when she says that the mining company tried to file all, all sorts of, uh, uh, legal maneuverings. Here in the writ of calikasan, bawal itong motions, no? Hindi pwede magfile ng motion to dismiss, motion for extension of time, motion for postponement, bill of particulars. You cannot also file a counterclaim, third-party complaint, or a motion to declare respondent in default. So these are all prohibited pleadings. The intent of which is so that the writ of calikasan cannot, the issuance of the writ cannot be delayed or cannot be deterred because of the urgency of the relief sought. Next slide, please. The good thing is that under the rules and regulations, you do not have to pay docket fees. That was the problem with, uh, that was our initial, uh, problem with the West Tower condominium owners and the residents of barangay bankal because, uh, san sila kukuan ng filing fees. Fortunately, under the regulations, no docket fees or filing fees are needed. And the petitioners, meaning those who file that case, are exempt from payment of the docket fees. Next slide, please. Okay, so immediately, that's why this is a protect, urgent protective writ. Within three days from the filing of the petition, the court already gives a writ of calikasan temporary. And it will require the respondents, the respondents being those who violated or are threatening to violate an environmental law, law or regulation to file within ten days, non-extensible period. At, uh, the defenses that are not raised and the answer is deemed waived. And also within three days for filing, the court will issue a cease and desist order as it did in the case of West Tower and other temporary reliefs affected until further orders of the court. Next slide, please. So, uh, depending on the discretion of the court, the court will set the case for hearing. Or as in our case, because there were so many facts to be determined, the Supreme Court referred it to the Court of Appeals. And we did have a pre-trial there and presented evidence. Dito mo makikita lahat ng mga major, so many big, because we were suing, uh, First Philippine, we were suing a very prominent company, and I will tell you who they are later. They were represented by the big law firms because we also sued together with F P I C, um, Shell and Chevron. So this was a theatrical production where the big law firms came to defend their own clients who were violators of this writ of, uh, environment. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So respondents, if they fail to file, they cannot be declared in default. But the court can order, next slide, the court, as in the case of West Tower, next slide, please, ordered a ocular inspection of the premises and required first, uh, First Philippines, our respondent to present evidence, no? First Philippine Industrial Corporation and First Gen were required to show evidence that they took care maintenance of this, uh, pipeline, which was beyond the age of instruct, uh, integrity, okay? Okay, and judgment was rendered in our favor by the Supreme Court. So let's now go to what is the writ, what is the case of West Tower Condominium Corporation? Please, next slide, please. In the interest of time, we will now proceed to discussing the case. Well, just of course, the, uh, respondents can file an appeal. And in this case, not only did the First Philippine Industrial Corporation file an appeal, they filed all sorts of motions using all the major law firms. Okay. So let me discuss with you today the West Tower Condominium Corporation versus First Philippine Industrial Corporation, First Gen Corporation, and their respective board of directors and officers, and all the other John Bose and Richard Bose, uh, meaning government officials who are likewise non-compliant with the various energy regulations. This case was decided on June sixteen, twenty fifteen by with, by then, by then Associate Justice Prespetero Velasco. So, uh, just by way of background, what is West Tower Condominium Corporation? West Tower, for those of you who may not be from Metro Manila, the West Tower Condominium is located in barangay bankal, Makati City, and is flanked by, on three sides by the General Figuvara Street. On one side, General Deltilar Street. On another side, uh, the President Serio Osmenia Highway. So this is flanked on three sides by these three major streets. Okay, and, uh, West Tower building was turned over to its owners and residents in nineteen ninety-seven. Now, so that is West Tower. Who are the respondents here? Uh, before I go to who the respondents are, this case was filed directly with the Supreme Court, not only by the West Tower Condominium Corporation residents and owners and the residents of the surrounding barangay, which is barangay Bangkay, Bankal in Makati. Although now we call it barangay Bangkay because of the, uh, many disasters and deaths that happened there. And we were joined, West Tower was joined by civil society groups, non-governmental organizations, and public interest groups who joined the petition because of the magnitude of the environmental issue involved. Who are these groups? These groups included the Catholic bishops conference of the Philippines, Kilusang Makabansang Ekonomiya, Alliance Against the Presence of Oil Depot in Manila, the Women's Business Council, Zonta International, the Junior, uh, Chamber International, and various individuals, most of whom are residents of barangay bankal. Okay, so not only was this a case filed by the owners, residents of West Tower Condominium Corporation, it was a big case because many NGOs, many civil societies, even the church decided to join this petition directly filed in the Supreme Court. So this is a petition for the issuance, or was a petition for the issuance of a writ of calikasan due to the leak in the oil pipeline owned by the First Philippine in, Industrial Corporation. Uh, who is, what is the First Philippine Industrial Corporation? Um, the First Philippine Industrial Corporation sadly, and Attorney Jimeno may not know this, is owned by the Lopez family, the Lopez group. Uh, its chairman is Federico Lopez and chairman emeritus is Oscar Lopez, uh, who headed the officers and board, and board of First Philippine Industrial Corporation. Likewise, we sued an affiliate company, First Gen Corporation, also headed by the by the Lopez group. This Lopez group sadly is the same Lopez group that, that Gina Lopez belongs to. Next slide, please. And, uh, I think we should also consider maybe, uh, in fairness to Gina Lopez, although the pipeline belonged to a company owned and operated by her family, um, Gina had no control of the circumstances. She did a ocular inspection, even wearing a gas mask, and saw the damage, the damage that was done to not only the West Tower Condominium Corporation units consisting of a twenty-two-story building above ground and four basements below ground. One hundred seventy-seven units owned by eighty families got affected by this oil spill and, uh, all the residents of barangay bankal. Okay, sadly Gina was not able to do anything about this, nor convinced her family members to do anything about the situation in West Tower Condominium. Philly, of the First Philippine, F P I C, or the First Philippine Industrial Corporation, by way of background, operates two pipelines and it operated this since nineteen sixty-nine. We have a white oil pipeline, or W P L, system, and this covers one hundred seventeen kilometer stretch from Batangas, Batangas, where it had its, uh, depot, to the Pandakan terminal in Manila. And this white oil pipeline transports diesel, gasoline, jet fuel, and kerosene. The reason we say that this case is of such magnitude and impacted so badly on the environment was that this hundred seventeen kilometer pipeline passed through Osmenia Highway, formerly South Superhighway, and Montenlupa City, San Pablo City, Binyan, Cabuyao, Santa Rosa, Calamba in Laguna up to the Batangas. So this hundred seventeen kilometers we counted, uh, traversed at the very least thirteen municipalities and cities along the way from Batangas up to the terminal in Pandakan. F P I C also operated a black oil pipeline system which extended a hundred five kilometers and transports bunker fuel from Batangas to a depot in Sukat Paraniake. So these systems transport nearly sixty percent of the petroleum requirements of Metro Manila and parts of the provinces of Laguna and Rizal. Next slide, please. This is how the West Tower Condominium basement looked before the F P I C fuels spillage. As you can see, well, as I said, there were twenty-two floor, floors above the ground consisting of consisting of, uh, one hundred seventy-five residential units with eighty families and two commercial units. On July twelve, twenty-ten, the residents of West Tower Condominium, numbering around eighty families, awoke, woke up to a nauseating odor that permeate, permeated all the floors. Next slide, please. In May ten, a leakage from one of the pipelines was suspected, as you can see from the drawing, after the residents of West Tower Condominium, or West Tower, started to smell gas within the condominium. This was in May twenty-ten. This is more than eleven years ago. So on July ten, twenty-ten, a search was made on the premises. And this search led to the discovery of a fuel, fuel leak from the wall of the basement. Uh, please see, so there was a leak in the floor of the basement. Now, due to the contaminated water, this fuel leak resulted in contaminated water, uh, not only in West Tower Condominium, but in the surrounding barangay. This is a leak of the white oil pipeline owned by F P I C. As you can see from the drawing. Makati City Hall and the D E N R ordered West Tower to stop the sump pump operation of flooding reach the lower portion of the second basement. Uh, the next, next slide, please. So F P I C initially So F P I C initially disowned any leak from its pipeline. So uh unfortunately, this Lopez group used media to disclaim. As we know, uh the Lopez groups group used A B S C B N and owns A B S C B N or operates A B S C B N. And it's this very same media uh that Gina Lopez used for all her in other environment issues. It is this very same media that denied that F P I C, this Lopez-owned company, was the cause of uh the leak in their oil pipeline. Those residents of West Tower shoulder the expenses. Personally, without any help from F P I C of hauling the wastewater from the basement, which eventually required the setting up of a treatment plant in the area to separate fuel from the wastewater. So ano nangyari dyan because nag leak nga 'yung white oil pipeline ng West Tower is the oil, the oil leak contaminated the water source of the whole condominium unit. Not only that, but also the ground well, the the grounds uh and wells of the surrounding barangay Bangkal or barangay Bangkay uh municipality. Next slide please. So the oil water treatment facility was provided not by F P I C, which denied through their own media network that they were the cause of the oil spillage. These pictures and the following pictures will show the extent. As I mentioned earlier, this consisted of three, four basements below the ground. This is a picture of the damage caused by the F P I C fuel spillage in the third basement after it became fully submerged in fuel and water. Next slide please. And uh this, as you can see, all the cars and all the transportation owned by the residents had to be moved out of the basements. Not only that, uh next, next slide please. So the fourth basement is a picture of the fourth basement after being fully submerged in fuel and water. Next slide please. And likewise, we can see that um this not only damaged the buildings, it also damaged the source of the water for the entire condominium unit. And so the residents and the owners had to move out. The oil gas leak caused the residents uh contam- to move out because the water was contaminated, and they even had to spend for their own sewage treatment plant. Uh as you can see from the pictures, temporary fuel storage drums were stored at the fourth basement. Next slide please. The elevators could not work, uh power was turned off because of the oil gas spillage, and there was danger that um the whole building could explode because the whole building became explosive and anybody who would light a cigarette or careless throw a ma- match would explode or would cause explosion in the whole building. So it resulted that the power had to be turned off, and in the darkness uh the residents uh slept in fear that the next moment that they would be gone because the whole building would be uh blown off. Next slide please. And so they installed fire safety and domestic water pipes again at their own expense. Uh F P uh West Tower Condominium had a board of uh corporation, had a board of directors that rallied all the residents and owners to spend for their own life and their own safety without any single centavo coming from First F P I C. So they installed fi- fire safety and domestic water pumps to replace the do- damaged domestic water pump and the damaged fire pump. Next slide please. And as you can see, uh this is the generator. They also could not use the generator when the power was turned off because the generator, the Gen Set room was be- was fully submerged in fuel and water. Next slide please. These are more drawings. Uh the spillage also damaged the sewage electrical switch and breakers and the fire safety auto switches. Next slide please. Circuit breakers, as you can see here, they're after being fully submerged in fuel and water. So the the fuel that was caused by the spillage in the pipeline of F P I C uh caused all of this damage. Um next slide please. These are more pictures, the Gen Set and the transfer switch. Next slide. You can see the contaminated water from the perforated pipe. And uh okay, so the residents tried to separate the oil from the water. And um again, without in their sump pit what they call, where the fuel seepage was detected. So F P I C denied that it was the cause of the leakage and said that and said that it could have come from cars that were parked in the basement or it could have been caused not by them or not by the integrity or the lack of integrity of their pipelines. But because uh those of you know, those of you who are familiar with this area, West Tower Condominium is uh is below the Magallanes uh over- overpass. And so F P I C said that this is caused because of the overloading. Uh when the trucks pass the Magallanes overpass, uh it bears upon the pipelines below. And so it is not our fault, it is the fault of all of these trucks and heavy buses and vehicles that pass the Magallanes uh overpass, causing the causing damage to the water pipes below and under the West Tower condominium and surrounding barangay Bangkal. Next slide please. So uh water had to be separated and then treated and then filled into drums. Next slide please. The water, the the water that the water was separated from the oil and the oil that came from the leak white, from the leakage of the white oil pipeline was enough to fill several thousand drums, which based on studies that we had made there, was enough to uh start at least four gasoline stations. So yun yun pong na-recover, yung sineperate, nung sineperate 'yung by oil water ch- yung sineperate 'yung oil from the water, the oil that was discovered and stored in these tanks by the West Tower condominium owners was enough according to our experts to start the business, a business of four gasoline stations. That's how much the oil was uh recovered from this the leakage. Next please. Okay, so I'm going up. Going next, let's go to the next. These are more, these are more pictures uh. Okay, so what happened? And so because because F P I C was not listening to the residents and through the use of their own media network denied any liability and sadly Gina Lopez was not any help to the West Tower condominium owners despite her having visited and done an ocular inspection wearing a gas mask where she could hardly breathe because of the fumes that came out from the basements. Incidentally, this was also a subject of a senate investigation because I had requested uh then with the senators uh for a an investigation of this uh environmental disaster that was ongoing in West Tower and indeed, uh thank you to Senator Mig Subiri, um he also did an ocular inspection of the premises and came to the same conclusion that the West Tower experts had in that F P I C was liable for the gas leak, oil gas leak in West Tower condominium units and in the surrounding barangay Bangkal. So without any other uh help or assistance coming from F P I C, we decided to go directly to the Supreme Court. It is just very fortunate that um as shown to you earlier, by then Chief Justice Reyna Topuno had just come out with the rules and regulations uh in twenty ten on the filing of writ of calikasan cases. So I think we were one of the first, if not the first uh complainants to test these rules and regulations of the Supreme Court. And uh we filed directly, as I said to you, together with interest groups. And this is what we asked for, directly with the Supreme Court pursuant to the rules and regulations. We filed a petition for the issuance per writ of calikasan uh requiring the issuance of an order permanently uh to permanently cease and desist from committing acts of negligence in the performance of their functions as a common carrier. Why as a common carrier? Because a pipeline under the law is deemed to be a common carrier because it transports oil. And therefore, as a common carrier, we all know that it is not only ordinary diligence but extraordinary diligence that is needed. And it is our allegation that F P I C violated or omitted the extraordinary diligence required of a common carrier, meaning of its pipelines. We also requested that an order be issued to to check the structural integrity of the whole one hundred seventeen kilometer pipeline. Remember, this one hundred seventeen kilometer pipeline stretched from Batangas to Pandakan. And so uh although West Tower was fortunate enough that they had a basement that could collect, four basements that could collect the oil leakage, uh we were worried, we had wondered if the leakage was not only in Makati but in all of these municipalities where the forty, more than forty, it's a forty-seven or forty-three-year-old pipeline. Um very old. Experts, our experts said that a pipeline has to be changed every twenty years. And the pipeline of this uh F P I C was already more than forty-three or forty-seven years old. So it had to be changed then. So um if this happened to West Tower, it may have happened to all the other pipelines running through this thirteen municipalities. So we had asked the Supreme Court to issue an order to check for F P I C to check the structural integrity of its whole pipeline. And if found to be uh if found, if this struc- structural integrity is affected, then to replace the whole pi- pipeline and to make periodical reports on its findings and more important to rehabilitate and restore the environment, again our experts say. And F P I C uh reluctantly admitted that even if they fix or replace the pipeline, it would take at least fifty years to rehabilitate the ground, the ground uh in all of these municipalities and to restore the environment in the affected West Tower area and the surrounding municipalities. And also we requested because this is allowed under the law to s- to open a special trust fund for all the victims and to answer for similar or future contingencies in the future. And three days later or November nineteen twenty ten, the court did issue, the Supreme Court pursuant to its regulations did issue a writ of calikasan with a temporary environmental protection order, T E P O ordering F P I C to cease and desist from operating the white oil pipeline until further orders, to check the structural integrity of its hundred seventeen kilometer pipeline while implementing sufficient measures to prevent and avert any untoward ins- incident and to make a report thereon within sixty days from receipt of the order. At that time, we were very pleased that the Supreme Court had sided with us. But as with as with big clients, uh not F P I C was servicing Shell and Chevron. So Shell and Chevron also had to get their own lawyers. Um there were many incidences in this case that caused so much delay. So next slide please. Next slide. So uh F P I C did submit a four-page report on the integrity check and preventive maintenance program. And uh First Gen, their affiliated submitted a report that said that they did not own nor operate the pipeline and that it is impossible for them to report on the structural integrity, much less to cease and desist because according to them, wala naman silang pakialam sa F P I C na. They're just an affiliate company. And so an ocular inspection of the white oil pipeline was ordered in the vicinity of West Tower to determine the veracity of the claim that there were two additional leaks. While after we filed with the Supreme Court, uh the leaks did not stop. There were two additional leaks discovered and so a ocular inspection uh was ruled and that was when Gina Lopez did inspect and see the magnitude of the disaster that this uh oil spillage caused. Next slide please. Sadly, Gina Lopez did not do anything. In the meantime, because of the reaction and because uh F P I C was using media to quiet the story of or or to uh silence the stories about F P I C, West Philippine uh the West condominium owners decided to file in the meantime a civil case, which is also allowed by the rules and regulations because filing of a writ of calikasan does not preempt the filing of other cases. So we did file a civil case at the regional trial court, branch fifty-eight in Makati. For violation of the following environmental laws, Republic Act six nine six nine on toxic substances and hazards and in nuclear waste control act of nineteen ninety, also for violation of the Philippine Clean Air Act and for violation of the Philippine Clean Water Act of two thousand four, with damages against the respondent's F P I C, First Gen, also its board of directors headed by the Lopez family and uh its affiliate affiliate boards and officers of First Gen. We also filed uh on behalf of uh the West Tower condominium owners and barangay Bangkal a criminal case for art under article three hundred sixty-five, the revised penal code for reckless influence. As mentioned earlier, since the pipelines are considered as common carriers because they carry goods from one place As common carriers because they carry goods from one place to another. The degree of diligence required is extraordinary diligence next slide please. Okay so as mentioned the complaint prayed that F P I C and its officers and directors. Of First Gen Filipina Shell Corporation Chevron. Which is now Caltech collectively the defendants be ordered to pay plaintiffs. Damages in the amount of two point eight billion pesos. Uh this was the amount of damages cost then then caused by the oil spillage. Uh it is much more now next slide please. So this uh te- two point eight million consisted of uh one point six in actual damages. Also in mo-. Four hundred million moral damages two hundred million exemplary damages. And three hundred million for a medical fund um. The complaint prayed that due to the negligence of the defendants they devi- violated all of these environmental laws. And fortunately filing fees were not required upon filing. As you can see with a two point eight billion claim nobody can afford. Or certainly our clients could not afford uh the filing fees please note that uh. This complaints and air all the actions done here were not by my law firm pro bono. And just like attorney himeno uh our law firm had to come. To aid and assist all of these uh complainants pro bono.
Attorney sorry put to interrupt I would just like to remind you that you only have ten minutes to finish the.
Yes it's almost done.
Thank you po.
Okay next slide please. So as I said criminal case was also filed for reckless imprudence. Um on the theory or allegation that extraordinary diligence was not done next slide please. Next slide please. So as of today the case the case remains pending both the criminal case. Eleven years please note this was filed in twenty eleven. Uh ten years we are now twenty twenty one this the case is still pending with the Department of Justice. Although we did get a favorable ruling. Uh this was elevated to the Department of Justice and that is where it is now laying lying down. Unacted upon even the civil case uh because of maneuvers of the big big law firms. Uh this case uh that has been met with various delays and motions is still pending in court. Sampung taon na sampung taon na pending pa rin ang criminal case at ang civil case meanwhile in the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court clarified and confirmed that what is covered. By the writ of calikasan is only the white oil. Pipeline remember as I said there are two white there are two pipelines the white oil pipeline and the. Black oil pipeline the case only included the white oil pipeline but. Uh subsequently and this was entirely closed. The black oil pipeline is for heavier fuel for bunker for uh airplanes et cetera. Um not for ordinary transportation but eventually. Because of the complaints filed by West Tower condominium corporation. And the municipalities involved both pipelines were closed. And remain close to date. So this has resulted in uh first F P I C having to transport their oil. To the recipients to the intended recipients by barges. No longer or ships no longer using the pipeline let's fast forward to. How are the victims so these are the issues for resolution of the Supreme Court. Um as earlier mentioned. They questioned the legal capacity of West Tower to sue. Is West Tower Corporation the real party in interest and whether a permanent protection order. After the temporary protection order should be issued. Against or directed to F P I C. In order to protect preserve and rehabilitate the affected environment next issue. As you can see how did the Supreme Court rule. This is how the Supreme Court rule. The Supreme Court ruled that the West Tower and Barangay Bangkal. For real parties in interest who stand to be benefited i- injured by the judgment in the suit. And the oil leak from the white oil pipeline. Affected all the condominium and union owners and residents of West Tower. As in fact all had to evacuate their units. In the wee hours in the morning of July twenty three twenty ten. When the condominium's electric power was shut down until now as I speak. As of today the unit owners and residents of of West Tower. Can still not return to their condominium units. Next slide please. Okay next slide please this is already more legal. Let's go to West Tower condominium at present. So West Tower condominium at present as you can see the picture as of date it cannot be a certain. Whether there is still fuel left in the basement. Of the structure because F P I C is not doing anything and the residents are not allowed. Of evacuated the premises next slide please. Uh although upon checking there is a posting on social media of a unit available for lease but as you can see. Nobody would want a unit uh. Nobody can sell or rent out the unit in West Con West Tower because as of today. Because there has been no remediation or no rehabilitation of the ground uh. The residents of uh Barangay Bangkal. Who cannot of course be removed from their barangays still to date. Smell the fumes and they are saying that uh many people have had these fumes have had carcinogenic effect. The fumes also affect the quality uh the oil leak still affects the quality of the water. Because of the various chemicals uh there have been de- de- uh they there have been uh dangerous effects. Continuing effects on the health and safety of the inhabitants of the neighboring. Well the neighboring barangay barangay Bangkar. Which they now call barangay bangkay uh just two more minutes on. Can we see the I talked I talked the other day well this week. I had occasion to talk to the residents of West Tower. And this is what um as you can see this is the effect of uh the oil spin on them. They say that for the condominium or the company there was loss of income from sales or rentals. The loss in asset value and potential loss of losing their properties. Because uh even if they cannot remain or they have been. Uh required to get out of their units they still have to pay real ti- real taxes. Uh that now is a is uh accumulating penalties. And uh this residence says. Although they s- they may seem to us impersonal because they are just paper losses. Consider how it was and continues to be. For an individual family who has needed to cope which has financial losses. And anxieties these past eleven years next slide please. This again relates to loss of income. As a matter of fact uh the Makati mayor binayden uh. At that Junjun Binay at that time said. That it that the fumes were so toxic. That if you light a if you put a lighter or light a cigarette there. The whole barangay and West Tower will explode so up to now. Uh he had issued then up to now a ban on firecrackers in the area. New Year's Eve in twenty eleven. Next slide please okay because of this the zonal valuation. Loss of market value has likewise been officially attested to. The official twenty seventeen zonal valuation in city of Makati. Is seventy thousand per square meters but in that area it is only thirty thousand square meters. Even if it is a prime location. And occupies an entire block on South Superhighway. And is in bounded bounded by two other main streets. Yet the value of West Tower now is much lower and nobody will buy a unit or lease a unit there now. Okay and sadly uh. Although Mayor Junjun Binay was was um sympathetic. The present incumbent mayor is now. Is now uh requiring that they pay realty property tax. At present. Next please. On a personal level. This uh resident owner says that in the last eleven years. There has been no justice for the West Tower victims and this was written just two days ago. We have been left to fend for ourselves because the antagonist F P I C parent Caltechs. Chose not to do a single right thing I wonder. And he speaks for most of them I wonder how they can sleep soundly every night. When they know that they have junked all forms of social responsibility. I and I am sure the rest of us all have grown older and wiser. And on a personal level I have survived a life threatening illness. As such financial losses such as I have discussed are not much my priority. But the hurt pain and anger are buried somewhere. Because there has been no justice. Last two slides I think please. Okay West Tower is victim of First Philippine Industrial Corporation. Environmental negligence and sadly indifference. These are the next slide please. Okay uh this is a personal account uh of one resident who had to evacuate. He was roused from his sleep to hardly vacate the building et cetera et cetera and um. Up to now he remembers this ordeal. Next slide please. Next slide please. No resident had thought that this nightmare would last for years up to now. Uh the ordeal happened in twenty eleven. It is now twenty twenty one they still remember as if it had just happened yesterday. This resident says my brother in law also vacated West Tower. He had no roof over his head for two years. He needed to relocate himself to his girlfriend's place at Commonwealth Avenue with. Whatever clothes he could hardly pack up. This was what happened not only to this person but to all the residents they had to hardly pack up. They left their belongings behind for fear that the building would then explode next slide please. Yes sadly there is a story all too common to West Tower residents some of whom had purchased their first home. With some not having had fully paid for their unit. Next slide please. Okay so West Tower the displaced residents and I think this is the last slide or second to the last slide. West Towers displaced residents faced years of uncertainty frustration and desperation. Caused by the corporate irresponsibility of the polluter F P I C. Supposedly a champion for the environment. The ineptitude or corruption of the D E N R and the indifference and corruption of the Makati City government. This is uh this was done by one of the residents. F P I C P F P I C spent months denying any pipeline leaks. Discovered by U P the U P also U P Nigs also helped us. To come from F P I C's pipeline and D N R despite announcing F P I C's culpability. And imposing a fine of close to twenty four million for the pollution in environment never please no. D E N R imposed a fine but never collected this fine. The Makati City government extended no assistance to the West Tower residents. Even placing the burden and cost of removing fuel accumulated in the basement of West Tower residence. Cost the cost was shouldered by the victims of. And sadly the Makati City government also did not impose. Any fine on F P I C the polluter. To date pyrotechnics or firecrackers on New Year's Eve is prohibited there by Makati City. So even if they recognize that it is a city or municipality waiting to explode. And prohibiting pyrotechnics or fireworks no assistance has been given to the victims next slide please. Sadly it was the sense of frustration this is from another owner and helplessness in government which drove Rosana. A daughter to give up on our government and seek a better future. For her son in another country. So this ends my presentation sadly. Although there may have been good news and good stories told to you. The story of West Tower condominium the residents of Barangay Bangkal. And the case their case filed against F P I C is not a. Good story today ten years or eleven years after the incident happened there has been no resolution. A civil case for damages is still pending. A criminal case for reckless imprudence is still pending. And meanwhile the residences residents who have no benefit of a trust or medical fund. Have to spend for their health and safety. Their health has been affected by the gas fumes which still come up from the ground in the area. And contaminated water which they still have to deal with. So this is a story and hopefully you as teachers will spread the stories of West Tower. And how sad their plight has become because it is not the law. Not the regulations but stories real life stories that should change the hearts and minds. Not only of us citizens but hopefully of all policymakers. And agents of government maraming maraming salamat po it was rather long because and. I'm sorry I talk so passionately about this because this has been a continuing saga for me. And uh I am in touch with the residents again this will not be a happy Christmas for them thank you.
Thank you very much attorney Kapuhan for that very um substantive lecture on the. On the case of the West West condominium tower I guess what um despite the story being a sad one. And then the fight for the um the the case of our clients is still pending up to present with what can what we can see is that. We can all hope for the better and maybe in the near future we can see the resolution to the case and. Um for the part for the victims of the condominium. To be well compensated for the damages done to them so I guess we will just have to had a five minute break. So that our participants can take um a rest or go to the comfort room we will be. Requesting you to be back at um ten fifty six so see you later. Alright welcome back again to our session so we will proceed to our third resource speaker for today. So let me introduce to you our third resource speaker. He has been our three source speaker for the past um two sessions. He is a writer and environmentalist and in two thousand three he acquired his. His Masters of Law in Energy and Environment. With distinction from Tulane Law School in Univer- in United States as and as a graduate in. And a graduate of environmental law student he specialized in hazardous and toxic waste. He specialized in hazardous and toxic waste regulation, marine pollution, and pollution control. He earned also his Juris Doctor degree from Ateneo Law School in nineteen ninety-four and his Bachelor of Science in Legal Management from the Ateneo of Manila University in nineteen eighty-nine. He has admitted to the State Bar of California and the Integrated Bar of the Philippines. He is also a member of the American Bar Association, an active law practitioner, a teacher in environmental law and a private international law in F E U Institute of Law. Ladies and gentlemen, let us all welcome again Professor Galahad P. Benito. Good morning to you, Professor.
Good morning, Attorney Mary, and good morning fellow professors and invited guests. Uh I'm supposed to talk this morning about Manila Bay Reclamation, but I'm pretty sure you already know what I'm going to talk about. So I changed my mind and instead I'm going to talk about the star of our show, the star of our training, the reason for our training, which will be our students. So for this purpose, I have brought along three students of mine, uh former students of mine, and let me uh call them out. Um Robert Salazar, can you open your camera and introduce yourself?
Good day, attorneys. First, I would like to thank Attorney Pepe Benito for inviting us to be a part of this uh webinar. I am Robert Salazar. I'm a fourth-year student from the Far Eastern University and I was a student of the best professor in environmental law, Attorney Pepe Benito.
And uh next student will be Camille, Camille Ferrer. Can you also uh introduce yourself to the professors?
Good morning. I am Camille Ferrer and I am a fourth-year law student in the Far Eastern University uh Far Eastern University Institute of Law and I was a student of Attorney Pepe Benito as well in environmental law and conflicts of law.
And lastly, I'd like to call on uh Clarinda Merle. Can you introduce yourself?
Good morning, everyone. I am Clarinda Merle from our Eastern University Institute of Law, and I was also a student of Attorney Pepe Benito in environmental law and conflicts of law.
Now, le- let me ask Clarinda first uh regarding uh how did a course on environmental law affect you as a person? Please compare your level of understanding of environmental issues prior to and after taking environmental law.
Hi. So my home um is actually situated in Bulakan and it is situated beside a river. And ever since I was law, I can see folks throw their garbage in the river because the local government does not provide a good garbage segregation or collection system. And sometimes a week will pass that no one really picks up our trash in the household. And so when I was younger and before I took this course, I constantly wonder why the environment is being so neglected this way. Um don't we have laws to protect the environment if there is, what is it implemented so poorly? Because whenever it rains hard during the months of June to October, plod will surely come inside our house and I hated it so much. And when I took the environmental law class, I was really excited about it because it is a course that can answer some of my questions when I was a kid. And there are, as discussed by Attorney Pepe Benito, we have uh Solis- Solid Waste Management Act and Clean Air Act as basic laws that aim to protect our environment. We are also in uh signatory the Paris Convention, which is thoroughly relevant. Um and with that, I became more aware of the climate crisis that we are into right now.
Okay, um my next question will go to Camille. Now, one of our activities concerned an actual case study of a water contamination case in a civil action. That story was about a young lawyer who had a bright future until a water contamination case came along and revealed what otherwise would have been a great feature. How did the story of Jan Schlickman affect you? And how can an actual case like a civil action enrich the learning of students?
Okay, so I read a civil action when I was in second year of law school and it showed me early on in my legal studies the practical and ideal implications of being in the field of law. So on the one hand, as an aspiring lawyer, I am I am moved by the causes of the people, seeing that one's actions affects others. So um for instance, to illustrate in this story, uh the il- irresponsible waste disposal of big corporations affected the main water source of the community which eventually affected the lives of innocent children. So and then on the other hand, I also saw the risks of going against big corporations to have the resources to tackle these cases head-on. So overall, the story reminds me to be level-headed in a way that I we- I must be able to make rational decisions uh in line with what is expected of me from the um community. So it's one thing to learn the legal concepts inside a classroom and it's also another to see how the legal subjects um come into play in an actual case.
Okay, civil action is just a great story. I certainly hope that you will always remember what the lead actor uh stated at the beginning of that story and he said that law is the highest calling that a man could aspire to. Okay, now Robert, this is your question from me. As part of your solid waste training, we had a fundraising activity where you were required to to take out all the junk at home and sell them to the nearby junk shop. The objective was to inculcate among students the values of sustainability and conservation. The other objective was that at the end of the semester, we had enough money to fund our nature classroom and our nature trip. What lesson did you learn from this activity?
Well, the activity taught me to minimize my usage of bond papers. So right now, uh I'm reading my cases through my laptop or iPad and if there's a really a need to print my readings, I print on both sides of the paper. I then place the used papers in a certain uh box or place in my room because I plan to sell them in the future because these things have value. Actually, even the bottles of beer and liquors, I also keep them. I plan to sell them to the junk shop in the future.
Yes, uh that that's very nice. I also remember you students um um participating in 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 the bar uh preparations and one of your activity was to go and collect all the the plastic trash after the bar exams. And you know, I I I thought I will ha- get resistance or complaints from you, but in fact, in the end, you actually enjoyed the experience. So that is really telling, okay? Now, I'm going back to Clarinda. You belong to that group that visited the waterfalls and caves of Tanay Rizal. Please relate your feelings and emotions that you had trekking the cave and enjoying the waters of the night. What's the importance of preserving an area like that, especially since Tanay will be severely impacted and affected by the putting up and construction of the Kaliwadam?
Yep. It happened around this time two years ago and
Yes, December eight for the other class, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, the place Kalina, is the Kalinawan Cave in the Narak Waterfalls of Tanay was actually really gorgeous, um well-preserved and the water was clean. I didn't see trash laying around the hill when we went inside the cave until we were able to get out. It was really beautiful and amazing to see the rocks that sparkled beautifully inside the cave. What I was amazed the most is how the local government of Tanay create ordinances to ensure that the garbage are well-collected, recycled even, and that you can feel that they truly care in preserving the environment because they are blessed to have these caves and waterfalls and it is their identity and pride. And seeing it firsthand made us realize that it is very important to make sure that the next generation will also be able to enjoy the nature as the way we did in Korea.
Okay, thank you. Um let me inform you also that that Kalinawan Cave has also also has uh historical significance. It was the base of operation of our revolutionary hero, uh Makaryosakai. So uh they did not tell us that, but I just learned it recently. Okay, um going back to Camille, your group, uh actually it was, I think, December eighth or nine of of two thousand nineteen, went to the Teresa Ma- Teresa Rizal Materials Recovery Facility, which is touted to be the best center in the country. From that visit, what does that tell you about L G use in general in our country? Because the impression about L G use is is not that good. Uh they do not know how to clean. They do not how how to segregate. But you went to the best operated center and you saw something there. So can you tell us uh something about that place?
Okay, so the visit showed me the potential of local government units to initiate positive and impactful change having limited resources. So that the Ressa Materials Recovery Facility exhibited the ingenuity of local governments in transforming waste into actual valuable and useful products such as coconuts, um construction blocks, and pillows. So here, it is evident that we can maximize our potential, our local government's potential by the sharing of best practices. So through the years, we are able to see what works and what does not. So if we are able to share this, we can make an impact on a wider level.
Okay, now I'm turning now to Robert. Yeah, you belong to my class where I conducted a survey that made you choose between environmental law and conflict of laws. Actually, that survey was submitted to the lab as part of my deposition paper uh for the retention of environmental law. In that survey, twenty-four students chose environmental law while only five students chose conflict of laws. Please tell us the reason why you chose environmental law over conflict of laws.
Uh sir, because I truly enjoyed the environmental law class. So aside from the actual discussions, we had a nature classroom where we were able to immerse ourselves with how a local government actually implements our existing laws. I truly enjoyed the trip, especially to the caves and the waterfalls, and I never thought that I would experience such a thing in law school, learning and having fun at the same time. So I think that uh and of course, the topics in conflicts of laws are already taught in some other courses like persons, property succession. So I prefer retaining the environmental law class over the conflicts of law class.
Okay, thank you. You probably had a bad conflicts of law professor. Who was your conflicts professor?
Well, it's the same professor of my environmental law.
It was me, okay? So uh I I have no problem if you tell me that I am a better environmental law professor than a conflicts professor. Returning to Clarinda, your environmental law in F U is only two units. However, when you took it with me, it was probably a three-unit course because of the so many requirements. In view of the many requirements of the course, was it even worth it?
Of course, it is. Um apart from learning the laws and the T T speakers that we have, we also able to read the novel while doing practical assignments such as recycling garbage. With all this we learn in the classroom and through the practical assignments we had, I was able to ask myself, what is still missing? Why are the bodies of water still polluted? Why is the air no longer fresh? What have we done wrong that was that must be fixed? With that, like Robert, I became more conscious of my actions even at home. Like as simple as us not letting water run in the bathroom or leaving appliances flood to reduce energy consumption. And on top of that, if I didn't take this course, I might not be able to pick A T C's topic which is related to environmental law, which is what we are working on right now.
Okay, uh going back to Robert, we had non-traditional activities in the course of the semester. Were you satisfied with a rather non-traditional approach in teaching? Would you rather have the traditional classroom approach to learning?
Well, I, for me, sir, I really enjoyed the uh nature classroom. It was a breather for me because uh instead of the usual sleepless nights of reading laws, I was able to go outside to learn and have fun at the same time. So I think environmental law is better learned when professors let the students see how uh environmental laws are actually implemented in real life. So I was definitely satisfied with the non-traditional approach in teaching uh or in learning environmental law.
Okay, now turning to Camille, can you tell us what is the most important lesson that you learned in environmental law?
Okay, so the most important lesson that I learned in environmental law is that everything is interconnected. First, that one's actions form ripulsive effects and effect or affects everyone around us. So whether positively like the Teresa Materials Recovery Facility or negatively like the irresponsible waste management of big corporations. Second, all subjects that I am learning, regardless of the number of units, are all substantial in advocating for a cause. So for example, I cannot be able to forward the cost through substantive loss if I do not have a good grasp of remedial law.
And for you, Robert, what's the most important lesson?
Well, it's from the practical point of view, I can actually earn from my used bond papers. So before the environmental law class, I just throw all my used bond papers away. But right now, I'm keeping them because in fact, in the past, I was able to earn two hundred forty pesos from selling my used bond papers, which I could actually use to buy another rim of bond paper.
Yeah, that that is so refreshing to hear from you because if you ask other students, they will give you abstract answers. But uh from your perspective now, you are now uh giving us concrete answers and concrete applications of what? The Solid Waste Act, okay? I turn now to Clarinda, okay? There will always be good and bad professors. If you ask me, professors that I will always remember will always be those who made life difficult for me, but who also made me learn, okay? So my question to you is, how important is the role of professors in mentoring good students and citizens? What are you looking for in your teachers?
Okay, it is it is very important because whatever our professors teach us and even the way they act outside the classroom speaks. During the first day of the semester, some of the professor will always ask us what field of load we want to venture into. And I hear some of my classmates say, I want to go to this field because I really like Attorney X, who is my professor in that subject, and he or she inspired me. So yes, it is important, especially that we are young adults whom and half of us are still very much curious on what we want to do or we want to be. And professors are our role models and they are our influences inside and outside the classroom. So what I am looking for, a teacher or a mentor, is someone who practices or embodies what he or she teaches.
Thank you. Um my question goes to Camille. Can you give suggestions on how we can improve online learning, not only in environmental law, but for all your classes in general?
I think a good mix of asynchronous, synchronous, and lecture classes, synthesizing everything would be beneficial for us in a way that we would be on the same page. And also, I think it is important to have good training in both written and oral tests in order to be prepared for the bar and for the legal profession.
Robert?
Uh I think the professors should uh use the learning management system that the school uh offers. Like for example, in F U, we have the Canvas. So I mean, we can utilize it for our examinations because right now the bar exam is conducted through digital platform. I think it would be beneficial if we also immerse ourselves to uh conducting exams through this uh online digital uh platform.
Okay, and and probably they can also provide you with exam software as a way of practicing in preparation for the bar exams. And and Clarinda?
I agree with Robert. I would also prefer to have a written examination for cases more emphasis so that we can have simulation of how the bar would feel like. I think being able to practice answering exams as if we are answering it for the bar can help me remove the fear of what will, of the fear that what if I am not able to finish on time? Or what if an error occurred in the system? We, like we used to had to do. So I want to encounter all of this, not in the, not in the bar exam, but during my exams in F U. And since we are preparing ourselves for practice, I also wanted legal writing or research to be given more emphasis. And maybe once in a while, a subject can ask us to write legal memo or meeting or like what you did Attorney Pepe Benito, you made us make two position papers for the semester so that we can practice and polish our writing skills.
Final exams, you found time to meet my fellow teachers this morning. Uh but today, I still have something to present to my fellow professors, some of which will be your pictures. So let me, let me share my screen, okay? Okay, let me, let me maximize. So this will be my tribute to students. Okay, uh if you look at the first slide, if you look at the upper right-hand corner, that will be the visit to the Teresa Materials Recovery Facility, touted to be the best uh facility in the Philippines. So this is the front of their office. If you look at the left-hand side, that's the processing area for used coconut fibers and 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 uh other leftovers. Commissioner Jojo, Teres- Therese is there, okay? And um if you look at the lower bottom picture wherein the students are holding something that's that's lemon. They gave us lemon when we went there. Uh courtesy of uh Engineer Pielago. And if you look at the bottom picture, a student uh holding a hollow block. Um they brought us to the hollow block making facility and they made us test the quality of their hollow blocks. So it had to take my student three to five attempts before the hollow block finally broke. So it is um from good uh workmanship and quality material. Next one, this is in protected area Tanayrisal. So if you look at the upper left-hand picture, that's the entrance to the Kalinawan Cave. If you look at the bottom right picture, that's the exit. Why are there less students here? Because the others decided to to make a take a more difficult exit. Hindi na ako sumama dahil baka hindi ako makalabas doon. In the upper right-hand uh photo, you see students enjoying lunch uh arranged by the L G U of Tanayrisal. And it's very good. Uh the L G U also provided us with around two to three tourist guides. The guy over here standing here is one of their tourist guides and the instructions were to be always with the students, making sure that they were safe and that they are not going to drown in the waters or in the waterfall. And in the left-hand uh bottom left-hand picture, that's the charcoal making facility. Okay, so this is their solid waste management uh uh activity in in my class, okay? So as a way of bringing the law to the doorstep of students, I made them experience and well, uh follow what the law is saying. So the first part was for them to bring all their junk, junk at home, okay? And we have lots of them. So all their used paper, all the the uh photocopies and everything, they brought it to the junk shop, even the old fan they buy there, okay? At the end of the semester, we were able to produce a substantial amount. One student was able to produce three thousand, another student two thousand, one other student was one thousand and so on and so forth. The lesson is that we can be sustainable and these students did not have to ask money from their parents for their nature classroom and nature trips. Okay, and this is another group of students that visited La Papacheya in Daspina. Yes, there is a forest, a forest thick forest area here in Metro Manila and that is in La Papacheya along coastal road, okay? How long this area will remain preserved remains to be seen in view of the fact that the Supreme Court has ruled that that even if this area is is included in the Ramsay list, okay? We are a sovereign country and we have the right to decide on our own destiny. But I am pretty confident that with Senator Bilyar around, they will have tremendous difficulty reclaiming this part, okay? That's La Papacheya. Also, I require my students to attend public hearings, E I S public hearings, senate hearings. In fact, if you look at the the right-hand picture here, this is a group of students that attended a hearing of the Committee of Senator Bilyar on the Manila Bay Reclamation, okay? On the upper left-hand portion, my students having a blast with their idol, see Professor Tony Oposa. And in the lower left-hand picture is a visit and accommodation by the Mayor of Los Banos Laguna. He was the pioneer in the in banning plastics. He was the first. It was the first L U to blend plas- plastics in the country. So uh he met my students for two hours and lectured to them about how to properly convince people about following environmental laws. Unfortunately, Mayor Perez was assassinated last year at a by at exactly the same place, I think, where they are stand in this picture now, okay? Now, the pandemic hit and we cannot do anything anymore, okay? So we had just had to do the best we could, okay? So turning lemons into lemonade, so what I did, my students, I had my students come up with a webinar, okay, with my guidance. So the first webinar we had, we invited an international rights of nature advocate in the person of Marie Margil. And she was aided aided by her local counterpart, Attorney Maki Madiraso. He is part of our group, but he is not, I think he is not uh around at this time. My webinar po yata ngayong hapon. So that is the first webinar. Now, at the end of the semester, we had another webinar wherein we discussed plastics pollution. Again, we invited the best speakers to talk to my students. The speakers were uh Vice Chair uh Cristian Lau of the National Solid Waste Management Commission. We also had Paeng Lopez, a former student who is now an active environmental campaigner. And the Philippine Plastics Industry Association sent their very president to talk before students. They usually don't do that. They do usually don't grant interviews, but sa kapipilit, pumayag din. And lastly, see Engineer Mylon Pielago, who is well, the best mentor in the country. So uh during the plastics uh uh webinar, it was organized in a monthly format. We tried to come up with a consensus in the end, not much consensus to talk about, but their consensus, all the speakers and all the students is that solid waste can work. Let's try and implement the Solid Waste Act so that we can counteract plastics pollution. And lastly, my students also had an oral argumentation on climate change. So all this they did during the pandemic because there was not much to do, okay? And lastly, let me show to you some pictures. I was talking about a a lawyers organization way back in two thousand nine. This was organized by Professor Tony Oposa. If you look at the upper right-hand picture, that's uh Loretan uh uh talking about uh environmental issues during the event. Uh Loretan is a colleague of mine, kasama ko rin siya sa anti-reclamation movement yan sa Manila Bay. In the bottom right-hand picture, uh if you see the old lady there, that is Tita Odette Alcantara. She is adopted mother namin yan ni Professor Tony Oposa. She is one of our mentors. So if you hear Tony Oposa talking about land, air, water, and soil, a lot of that were were uh influenced by Tita Odette Alcantara. And in the left-hand portion is that that group that met in Tagaytay. I see Attorney Lisa there, I see Dean Himeno. And hopefully, in better times, we can duplicate the same and come up probably with a better lawyers organization that can use the rule of law to affect changes in society. So let me end with some words of wisdom for students and for fellow professors. From Benjamin Franklin, tell me and I forget, teach me and I may remember, but involve me and I learn. So thank you to everyone. This has been a nice odyssey for all of us. And today is the fifth day of the Macular Conception. May Lady Wisdom be with us all this morning. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Professor Galahad, and to Robert, Camille, and Clarinda for that very wonderful discussion on your experiences and learnings in the field activities for the subject environmental law. Surely sharing your insights on how you have would want the subject to be taught as well as the field activities inspection as a pedagogical approach. Teaching is an inspiration to our participant who can adopt the same approach to improve the subject teaching. So let us now move on to the Q and A segment. So I'll be giving the floor to Matthew to facilitate us. Matthew?
Thank you very much, Mary. And uh thank you very much for all our speakers and our students for such a a rich and uh really interesting stories, not only the good stories, um but also the challenging stories. So um this is in fact perhaps our last Q and A um for our uh Philippine Legal Education Board Training. Um would, is there anyone, uh if any of our participants, if you'd like to um raise a hand or 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 put in a question? I also saw that was some sharing um in the um and I think Jelly, uh you also um provided some uh a comment about your paper. I'm wondering, would you like to say a few words about the paper that you referred to in terms of the Taal Lake case? The local fish cage operator?
Hi, good morning, my dear. I I was I was got unaware. I was I was sharing the paper because I was inspired by the discussion of uh Attorney Linda. I mean, I I know Attorney Linda was one of her volunteer lawyers in the case of Lubo. So since I am from Batangas, I am really like uh when I remember that one of those affidavits that he had. I think I was the one who went to all of those moni- barangays in in Lubo and actually took the affidavits of this barangay official. Specifically, there was some barangays who claimed that their signature were in fact forged because they were considered official of barangay A when they were in fact official of barangay B. So in that case, we were able to disprove the validity of the public consultation which was used by then the L G U in the issuance of the resolution um supporting the open mining. So what I share with you is actually uh an experience I had as a young lawyer. I mean, it was two thousand twelve. I I passed the bar two thousand um seven and I was more involved in government administrative law. But at that time, I was working with the U S D in a project for uh promoting um um sustainable aquaculture in Taal Lake. And then suddenly, this is actually a different story because at that time, a comparty lease filed a case against the D N R for Aritok Kalikasan and the call was removing fish cages in Taal Lake because, I mean, they are polluting the lake. It's a protected area. So in that case, I was representing the government, assisting fish cage operators, um giving them some technologies on how to improve their fish cage operation in the lake. And then suddenly, there is a call to remove our fish cages. Since since I was the only counsel there, it's like, okay. I took the the challenge of representing the fish cage operators and then what we did is file a motion for intervention. So that is what we did. So there was a a Aritok Kalikasan case and we filed a motion for intervention saying that because the case, you know, it's about the petitioner, at that time, the energy, the uh party list, and then the D N R, specifically the Protected Area Management Board. And then I am here representing the the local fish cage operators. So we we filed a motion for intervention and we did actually like like what Attorney Hemenno did in Lubo. Here, we tried to collaborate with so many because like people at that time were saying, yes, remove the fish cages. But then, of course, the issue is if we remove the fish cages, what alternative livelihood are we going to provide to these people? So in that case, we actually defended the case not on the legal issues. Of course, we we defended on the issue whether or not that that Taal Lake is under the Nipas Act, which is a protected area or under the Fishery Code because this is uh governance issue, Pambi and L G U. Because if it's Fishery Code, then ten percent of the lake should be appropriated for fish cage. But of course, aside from the legal arguments, what we did when we were presenting the case in the Court of Appeals was a social uh impact assessment of the fish cage operation in Taal Lake. At that time, I was part of Batanga State University. I was a vice president for Resource Generation and External Affairs. So we did a rapid assessment for two weeks of the socio-economic impact of fish cage operation and that was used and presented to the Court of Appeals. So basically, in that case, when you do environmental case, sometimes you go beyond the legal issues. You you have to be, as we mentioned from the very beginning of our lecture here, environmental case is actually multidisciplinary. So in that case, we were able to convince the court that um don't remove the fish cages, but rather assist them on how to engage in a more sustainable and responsible way of promoting aquaculture. So moving forwards, actually, we were able to get funding um to promote uh the first pilot application of third-party certification of aquaculture in Taal Lake. I I was able to get funding for that. Unfortunately, the L G U wasn't ready, so we weren't able to get the support of the surrounding L G U for the first pilot application of uh the fish cage operation in Taal Lake for aquaculture stewardship council certification. So this is actually a a third-party certification to to promote the business, the business. Anyhow, what I'm sharing with you is that, you know, the Aritok Kalikasan case is we can use it actually to promote a more sustainable and responsible way of doing business because in in the first place, I mean, in my experience, um people destroy the environment because they are poor and some of the big companies are taking advantage of poverty to exploit the environment. So unless we actually help the communities who are poor to have a more sustainable way of uh benefiting from the the bounty of the environment, they will not be the one to actually advocate a sustainable use of of the resources. So right now, as I'm saying, I I was in in Europe for the last five years doing my my PhD. Last two months ago, I was so happy. Why? Because I've seen the product of Taal in 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 Italy. What is that? Because fisher farms, fisher farms is actually a product wherein if you look at the the um supply chain, the the raw materials of Bangus and Ta and Tilapia came from Taal Lake. And of course, you know that, you know, bringing products to Europe requires so many regulation regulatory compliance. And just to see that a fisher farm products that is originating somewhere, I think, in Pangas, Pampanga, but the supply chain, the 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 raw materials of the fish came from Taal Lake because we are promoting their responsibly farmed aquaculture. And the rate of continuing mandamos, it is still under the rate of continuing mandamos, had helped all of the actors in 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 Taal Lake to have more sustainable way of using the lake. Although I think I heard that the next step is to file, no, the last one, the next is to file a rate of Kalikasan case but against those big businesses in Tagaytay because I think the pollution now in the lake are coming from from those uh private sector.
Always an ongoing challenge. And we have uh Ronaldo Agaron, would you like?
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
I I'm Ronnie. I'm also from Batangas. I I I I don't know if it's Batangas Day. Hi Jelly, hi. And it is the four hundred fortieth Foundation Day of Batangas Province, sir. Uh last is the four hundred fortieth uh founding anniversary of Batangas, December eighth. Sir, uh last December two, our students from the Batanga State University launched an online portal for environmental awareness and environmental advocacy. These are the students of the Batanga State University for Environment Law. And it's called, it's in Filipino, sir. It's kaalaman at simulaing makakalikasan sa Timog Katagalugan ngayon uh with the uh it's called Kamulatan. I'm I'm hoping to promote this uh very soon in all portals and I would like to share it with my fellow professors here in in the L E B forum. Um small steps for the Batanga State University students, small steps that I hope we could do quite often, daily, so that small steps could lead to bigger, bigger things. That's all, sir.
Thank you very much, Attorney Ronnie. And if you could let us have the the web Thank you very much, Attorney Ronnie. And if you could let us have the the website, we are certainly happy to promote it to to all of the participants um on the on the call and also on the the Teach Environmental Law website. I you know, I think and as Professor Galahad showed, you know, when you um bring students and promotes the students' work, um it creates such a different environment for teaching environmental law um so that it becomes such such a much more en- environmental issues, that much more um engaged and passionate. Thank you very much, sir.
I'd ask my students to share it.
Please, please, that would be great.
Hi, Sir Galahad. We'll share it with you, sir.
Yeah. Secretary Hiron was also, we worked with him also sa Taal Lake. We attempted to to there was an attempt to clean up Taal Lake years ago. So thank you for for helping us when you were in Malacanyang.
My my, always, sir. My pleasure for my province and for environment, sir.
And as yes, as Commissioner Jojo says, happy anniversary for Tangas um four hundred and forty years. Um.
Jojo.
Do we have any more um any more comments or or questions to our our speakers, our participants, or or even our law students? And I like Professor Galahad that you you uh al- allowed the students to say the good things and, you know, commenting about um other of their their lecturers, you know, so. So we get we get the unvarnished truth from all the students. Is there any other comments? And and yes, as as Ralph has put in the evaluation forms and and the attendance forms. Perhaps I can also ask Pr- Professor Galahad um in terms of from from your perspective, a- as a environmental law professor, um how do you respond to student engagement? And for you, you know, is is it sort of satisfying when your students are so engaged? Do you find it worth all the the that, you know, the time and the effort and the the commitment?
Well, it it fuels uh it it gives the fire uh uh all 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 the hard work. Uh it's all because of them. So uh we get to apply the law in in conjunction with them and we we bring down the law at their very doorstep so that they can experience the law as it should be so that right from the very start when they start uh when they study environmental law, they have a proper idea that the law can work so that when they become government officials later on, they know that the law can work and they will properly implement it without having any excuses. And 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 from their experience, okay, because solid waste is L G Us are having difficulty trying to implement it, but it's, I think it's the simplest law to even implement. And yet, not all L G Us are able to follow that. So it's always a good thing that students start out running from the ground and and see how the law works and implement it in their own very lives.
I've always thought that that was sort of a a transformative way to to engage students, to show them that it's not just studying for the bar but that you can use the law um i- in all circumstances. It it's it is a vocation in some respects, a profession in others, but it can also have huge, create huge benefits for the community. And once you show students that what is written on a page or in a law actually is is applied in practice and how it can be applied in practice and make work. That that just seems to be um very transformative and 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 I had great lectures when I was at law school for that. Um Attorney Kap- Kapunan?
Yes, uh.
Please.
Uh good morning, Matthew and Professor Galahad. Maraming salamat for bringing in the students now because, as you said, it's the s- the start of the show, really, the students. We never, we and we all are students up to now. We are students of the environment. Matthew, I'd just like to point out that um corporations really are still motivated by their bottom line. Uh and uh the case of West Tower is a case in point. Although um although the Lopez family, Regina Lopez, has been very environmentally conscious and into um environmental advocacy, where it started to hurt the bottom line, um there was a problem. And so therefore, I think that's what we should be aware of. That uh at the end of the day, although we should emphasize corporate social responsibility, we should also be aware of the reality that where that affects a corporation's bottom line, environmental concerns uh gets thrown out of the window. So uh I guess it calls for vigilance, more vigilance, especially when we're dealing with the uh Goliaths of this world. We were a David, we were a David that the that uh challenged the uh Goliaths of this world and we won the first round, but it is a continuing struggle. That's what I'd like to share, Matthew, and thank you for this opportunity, Matthew.
Thank you. I I also think, I mean, I if I can just ask a sort of a follow-up question um because we've also heard now a lot about environmental, social governance issues. Um and again, I when I talk about the E S G issues, um I always say, look, there are legal requirements, so corporations a- at a bare minimum have to comply with the law. Um but it also seems that E S G, like corporate social responsibility, has have been adopted mostly by larger corporations to avoid their their genuine environmental and social responsibilities. The question then is, how can we use the law? You know, what where, when you've got a criminal case that's that's lying in abeyance for for ten years, you know, when you haven't got finality and co- completion? How how can we? How can we do that? Because in some ways, if you lose the case, at least it's over and finished, you know, you people then. But if it's in abeyance, it means that um justice is still not being met. And and I had, I was on a a panel we had with a justice from the Supreme Court of Thailand who made the point that justice delayed is justice denied. It's not just a something that we think about um you you know, i- i- in the abstract, it it's a genuine problem because it it means that people have not got justice or have not even got any finality. There's still processes ongoing. So I'm just wondering how is it that we can make the law um work to finality rather than have all of these cases often drag on for for decades, which seems to me um to be, you know, deeply, deeply um troubling for the rule of law.
I think um Matthew, here is where we need the whole of government approach. And in the Philippines, as you know, we have uh three uh separate branches. We have the executive branch, the government agencies that are to deal with uh implementing legislation, and of course, legislation policy is created by our Congress. You have the Senate and the lower house, and uh which is why the May nine elections is very crucial. The ballot must be our bullet. Uh we're talking about climate change, no, but uh that has taken the back burner because of the pandemic and because of corruption issues. And uh if the ba- if there is a ballot uh that will decide our future, then we must we must choose our leaders who are aware because uh as we advocates for climate change says, on climate change say, we have no planet two. This is our only planet. There is no planet two. And of course, there is the judiciary. And here, here, as you pointed out, uh the justice system must work. In a justice system where sadly uh justice can be bought, judges can be corrupted by big business. Um it is not surprising that a case like ours where uh the Goliaths are involved will take eleven years and still going. So um but uh as uh as uh Professor Galahad had said, said, uh let's not lose hope. Today is the feast day of Mama Mary. So um there is always hope. Uh there is always hope and here is where young minds, let the stories that students uh and teachers who are in this forum and like you uh who sponsor shows of fora like this, let us multiply our stories because it is these stories that can change hearts, can change minds and can influence policymakers, can influence government, can influence our judiciary. So public opinion must be reach ma- public opinion must reach a critical mass. That's what uh I'm very grateful for and uh being invited to learning sessions such as this. Let us all work together to reach that critical mass where people will have no uh alternative but to respect the environment. Matthew.
Salamat po. Thank you very much, Attorney Kapunan. Um and thank you very much again for more stories that have been shared for our students um and from our participants and also our presenters today. Um I think that's also one of the things that is always inspiring uh for us as environmental lawyers, sharing the environmental law stories. Um some are really good, um some are less good, but we learn lessons from each. Um so thank you very much. I'll now turn back to to Mary um for for the the closing and the the awarding ceremony. But uh from myself, thank you all very, very much for your attendance and participation today. Thanks, Mary.
Thank you to Matthew for that um discussion, for the question and answer and to our to our participants and to our resource speaker, Attorney Kapunan and Professor Galad for staying with us until the end of the training. Um thank you very much. We will now move on to the awarding of the certificate of appreciation to our invited resource speakers. The Legal Education Board awarded the certificate of appreciation to Attorney Rita Linda Ventura Jimeno, managing partner of Jimeno, Kope and David Law Offices for sharing her time, knowledge and expertise as resource speaker during the Environmental Law Teachers Online Training Program eleventh session, Environmental Law in the Anthropocene held via Zoom virtual conference and given on the eighth day of December in the year of our Lord twenty twenty one in Manila, signed on behalf of the board by our chairperson, Anna Marie Melanie B Trinidad. With the same citation, we also award the certificate of appreciation to Attorney Lorna Pataho Kapunan, founder and senior partner of the Kapunan and Castillo Law Offices for being with us also today and sharing her 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 insights on the keys of the West Philly first condominium tower. Thank you, Attorney Kapunan.
Maraming salamat.
Next, we also award, thank you pa. Next, we also award this the same certificate of appreciation to Professor Galahad V Benito, environmental law advocate and professor of the Far Eastern University for sharing also his time, knowledge and expertise and being with us today in the eleventh session of the Environmental Law Training Program given on the eighth day of December and signed by our chairperson also by Chairperson Anna Marie Melanie B Trinidad. Thank you so much, Professor Galahad. Now we move on to the awarding of us the plaque of appreciation to the partner organization of the Legal Education Board, whom without which we will not be having this training at training program. So we award this plaque of appreciation to the Asian Development Bank for the organization's significant commitment and exemplary contribution as a partner of the Legal Education Board in delivering the Environmental Law Teachers Online Training Program, which is geared towards the enhancement of the pedagogy in teaching environmental law in the Philippines as part of the Legal Education Reform Initiatives in the country. Given on the eighth day of December in the year of our Lord twenty twenty one in Manila, signed by our chairperson, Anna Marie Melanie B Trinidad. Next, we also would like to award this certif- this plaque of appreciation to the International Union for Conservation of Nature, I U C N Academy of Environmental Law, also a partner organization of the Legal Education Board for its significant commitment and exemplary contribution to the in the delivery of this training program geared also toward the enhancement of the pedagogy in teaching environmental law in the country. Having the same citation and signed by our chairperson, Anna Marie Melanie Trinidad. Congratulations and thank you, I U C N. Lastly, we award this plaque of appreciation to the United Nations Environment Program for the organization's significant commitment and exemplary contribution as a partner of the Legal Education Board in the delivery of this training program. So we, this is having the same citation as read earlier and this is signed by also by our chairperson, Anna Marie Bella D P Trinidad for the plaque of appreciation for our partner organization who will be sending to your offices the respective uh physical copy of the plaque. Now, we would also like to congratulate and commend our partner res- expert partners to this training program. So the Legal Education Board also award a plaque of appreciation to Attorney Rose Lisa V Isma Osorio, Chair of the I U C N Academy of Environmental Law for sharing her invaluable expertise, competence and time and effort in actively participating in the formulation and the realization of the Environmental Law Teachers Online Training Program, which is geared towards the enhancement of the pedagogy in teaching environmental law in the Philippines as part of the Legal Education Reform Initiatives in the country. Given on the eighth day of December in the year for your twenty twenty one, signed on behalf of the board by our chairperson, Anna Marie Melanie B Trinidad. The same plaque of appreciation is also awarded to Attorney Antonio A Oposa Junior from the Normandy Chair for Peace for sharing also his valuable expertise and competence, time and effort in the formulation and realization of this training program. Sadly, Attorney Oposa is not around, but um she shared with us today a very good uh video presentation of good stories which I hope our participants would be in- inspired to copy and to multiply the efforts of um Attorney Oposa. So we will also moving on to the presentation of a plaque of appreciation to Attorney Donna Zegas Conia, environmental law professor and advocate, for sharing also her time and invaluable expertise, competence and effort in the formulation and realization of this training program. This is having the same citation as read earlier, and this is also signed by our chairperson, Anna Marie Melanie B Trinidad. And lastly, we also award this plaque of appreciation to our very active resource speaker for today, Attorney Galahad, R A P Benito, environmental law professor and advocate for her sharing his invaluable expertise, competence, time and effort in participating also in the formulation and realization of the Environmental Law Teachers Online Training Program geared toward the enhancement of the pedagogy in teaching environmental law in the Philippines, signed also by our chairperson, Anna Marie Melanie B Trinidad. Thank you very much to our partner organization and to our partner um expert, expert partners and to our resource speakers. So before we end this training program, to our part dear participants, first and foremost, we would like to thank you very much on behalf of the Legal Education Board and our partner organization, let me express our appreciation to our speakers for the eleven sessions and to our expert partners, to my colleagues, Angelo, Gladys, Gab, Ralph, thank you for your efforts and your valuable contributions. To Matthew, our wonderful facilitator and a true teacher at heart, and to Commissioner Jojo for her passion and dedication to this training program for our faculty, Philippine Faculty Law Professor. Our deepest gratitude goes to all those who attended and help it, help this training program make a success and to your continued support to the improvement of the Philippine legal education. Thank you very much and we are e- excited to have you again in our future activities. Um let us assure you that the Legal Education Board will continue its advocacy in improving the legal education system in the Philippines. We will dedicate all of our efforts and we hope to see you again in twenty twenty two for our succeeding activities, trainings and webinars. For the evaluation sheet, attendance sheet, kindly check our chat chat box for the links. And then for the issuance of the certificates as well as for the release of the handouts, we will be coordinating with you through your email address and we will you will be posted. Thank you very much, everyone. So I hope you enjoyed and learned so much from our eleven course um session beginning last September twenty two. I wish you everyone a good day, a happy holiday, and see you again for our next session.